Mrs. Bloom, here. Ms. Lehman.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Nally.
Here.
Mr. Price.
Here. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting held April 14th, 2025?
I'm moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved. Moving on to legislative report.
Yes, have a number of things. Today was at noon, there was a legislative liaison web webinar, question and answer lasted about an hour. Some of the things that we covered there and some of the things that we've read in other items that have been sent to us. Wanted to mention that with the budget in Columbus, right now, the Senate is looking at the Education Committee. We'll be having public hearings on May 7th and 14th. There's quite a few different bills before before them. One of the things that you'll hear from our treasurer and that that I'll mention several times probably tonight is talking about the legislature right now is looking at this cash balance situation and throughout the state. And they're looking at wanting to cap those carryover dollars. Whereas someone might look at that and say, you know, hey, there's a good bunch of money there. Why do you need more money? Well, one of the things that happens is as we go for levies and those those take into consideration that expenses are going to continue to go up over the course of time. So if a levy is safe for five years, it's not that we as a district are saying that we can get little now and then get more later as things go up. You get that same amount throughout that. So you are going to have a little bit more cash at the beginning. And and then as prices continue to go up for different items, then then we have those dollars to make it through that period of time that we've told the voters in our community. One of the things that with that cash balance and and again, I think we'll see from from our finance committee and also from our treasurer is being very transparent as to what those dollars are that are being carried over and what those are designated for within the district. And, you know, most of the most all those dollars or all those dollars are set in that budget that's presented. And then we also have our five-year forecast. There's a lot of lot of pieces to that puzzle. Also wanted to mention, one of the considerations is the elimination of a replacement. And and I'll ask for assistance with this if if I'm saying this wrong. They're looking at eliminating the option of going for a levy that is a replacement. And
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes. So right now you have the option if you are going to take a levy that would be similar, but change maybe the rate or something you would call a replacement levy. You have one expiring that you're going to replace with a new one, but there is legislation that will totally take that option away. Every levy would have to be that's not a renewal would have to be a new levy. It would not be allowed to go on as a replacement.
And and I would share, one of the things that the speaker today mentioned was that since 2010, there within our within our state, there have only been 40 attempts at going for replacement levies. And not all of those 40 were school districts. Some of those were townships, different other political entities. So, you know, I think what OSBA is looking at is trying to make sure that we have all the tools in our toolbox to make sure that we continue to provide the quality services to our students. A couple other things that I noted that, you know, they're still working on is House Bill 205. I thought was interesting. It's called the Future Education Support Act, which is to collect data on teachers. And they throw out a lot of different options, working with student teachers. But the main thing that they're trying to get across to everyone is that there is a demand for teachers. And whatever we can do to show that there's that need, you know, within our districts is what this particular bill was is trying to accomplish. They're also talking about the cell phone policy. They indicated that their understanding is the legislature, both the House and the Senate are pretty strong on just a total elimination of cell phones. Basically even coming into the building. Or is that is that your understanding Denise?
That is my understanding. So current legislation mandates that by July 1 of 25, so this coming up summer, all districts across the state of Ohio needed to have a cell phone policy in place. So we have spent some time this school year tweaking ours and taking a look at that. But what the current conversation will come for the year after, and what I'm hearing is a total unallowance.
Right.
So we'll see what the true language is at the end of the day.
Right. Thank you. The final thing I wanted to mention was, which I thought was, this was reflection on the thinking of our legislators that are being that are talking to the OSBA staff that are are advocates. They were asked the the question about the cumulative effect of all these bills. If you took them all at one time and said, what is the effect on our schools? Then you could piece that out and figure out, okay, this is going to be pretty massive. But they were asked, are you looking at that cumulative effect? And their answer was emphatically no. They're looking at each individual bill. And and to me, that's very scary because you take each of those that put on a different requirement, a different dollar amount, and boom, it's this big number. And, you know, if the if the reasoning is to kind of blow up our system, they can accomplish that by doing something like this. So hopefully somebody, you know, kind of comes to their senses and realizes that cumulative effect of bills. So to me, it's me, that was one of the more scary statements that come from a number of legislators. And right now, that's all I have.
I got a couple of comments. Gosh, some, I think the scariest thing out of all that is these are the people running our state. That's scary to me. One, the cell phone thing, good luck with that, Columbus, because you're going to have so many parents coming after you. Your constituents are going to be like, really? So now my kid has to leave it in their car? Or if they're riding the bus, I want them to have a phone. Everybody has a phone. Everybody has a phone. If the school districts do their job and stop that from happening in the school, not a problem. So that have fun with that one. But the cash.
We'll be left to handle.
Yeah, again, it'll be the school district that looks bad.
My challenge.
Yeah. And the legislators will be like, well, I don't know anything about it, like they always do. The thing about cash balances, does anyone in Columbus, has anyone owned a business? Or do they have any kind of business sense whatsoever? Because to say you can't have a cash balance as a private business, I have a cash balance because my egg prices at the cookie shop quadrupled on me. I got to raise my prices or I had, I didn't get to, I had to, to help cover that cost. School districts don't have a product to sell. So how do we rate? We can't generate more income. And the thing is, is what I would tell them is then don't have a biennium budget. Because every two years, everything changes. So we're not supposed to have a cash balance, but oh yeah, by the way, we're going to change your funding every two years. And we're going to scrap the old model and go to something new and stupid again, and it doesn't work. It doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. And then they're not even thinking what this cumulative does to a district? And then, oh, but by the way, we need teachers in our schools. We're going to take away your money and we're going to blow up the system, but we need teachers. Come on. And then it still goes back. Does every school district, not public schools, but does every other type of school in this state have to follow and do everything that we're doing? Because if it isn't, then it's not a level playing field and they need to shut up down in Columbus because it doesn't make any sense. If you're going to hold everybody accountable to the same thing, great. If not, scrap it. It makes zero sense. I'm telling you.
Fire it up.
The insane running the asylum, I think. Thanks, Don.
I always like to be the blur.
I don't need any coffee now. Who wants to go to Columbus? We'll make a road trip real quick. Beat on some doors, beat on some heads too.
To attend a meeting, of course.
That'd be a fun meeting, let me tell you. I think my head would explode if I sat in one of those committee meetings. To hear the pure stupidity that they don't even follow what they're trying to do.
Well, and it would behoove them to like gather input from local districts on
Yeah.
how how some of these things, whether it's the singular bill or the cumulative, is going to affect the local district. And every local district is different. Things that might happen in a Lucas County, a Cuyahoga County, Hamilton County are going to be very different than Sandusky County and Seneca County and some of the other, you know, smaller communities. So.
I would say OSBA, you know, when I, when I listen to what they're presenting and I think they do a really good job of advocating for our districts. And they're supposed to be that voice that you're talking about. What I think we can hope is they're meeting with superintendents and they're talking to the districts. And hopefully getting that information, but then somebody has to listen. And that's and that's the challenge, going back to what Mr. Price was saying, that, you know, we we have to have those people in Columbus that are going to listen to those thoughts.
Problem is, there's too many people in Columbus that want public schools to fail. It's been like that since I've been on the board. I mean, the state testing, everything else, it all sets it up for public schools to fail. And let's move Ed choice and let's put vouchers in place. Great. I'm all for it. Let's make it a level playing field. That's all. Plain and simple. But the powers that be.
You have my vote, Mr. Price.
Don't want to hear that. You know, they want to keep their little schools the the same and not have to deal with it. Well, great. We don't want to deal with it either. Get rid of it. We don't want red tape for everybody. Let's just eliminate red tape for public schools. Public schools are failing. Wonder why? Let's go take a trip to the Education Committee down at Columbus and let's figure out why. I can tell you about 10 reasons. All right. We better move on. Otherwise, I'm going to go on a bigger rant and it's going to be we are driving to Columbus, whether you want.
Mr. Price, I think a final note, though, with some of the things that Mr. Nally did share, I think it's important to note with our community that now is the time to make sure that individuals are receiving quality information and are taking a few minutes to look into some of the topics that you brought up. Hearings are being scheduled. Now is a great time to reach out to those individuals that represent us that are in Columbus and are sitting on those committees and have a place at that table with our voice. And so as you hear these things that maybe cause us a little bit of pause, now's a good time to to be able to put those things in action.
Those contact, all the contact information, they can go right to our Fremont City School website and find.
I believe it is all there.
I looked and.
I believe it's all right there. Yes.
So.
So great. I think that's a great plug for our community, just to make sure that we're we're all moving forward, but that we're informed. We know what the important topics are and we we use our voice.
Right.
Thank you.
Moving on, no walk-on items tonight?
No walk-on items, sir.
Anyone wanting to address the board, we're not going to let, no, Shelley's not allowed to, so. Vroom, Shelley, vroom. That's just for Ty to hear, so. Moving on to superintendent's report.
Good evening, board members. Thank you so much. This evening, I would like to start with by inviting Mr. Tony Walker to come to the podium. Tony is our college and career assistant director. And he is going to share some information with us about our business advisory council. This is something that a couple of times throughout this school year, we've mentioned this BAC. And we've had a few notations along the way. And I was looking for an opportunity, a timeframe where I could invite Mr. Walker. He sits on the business advisory council with me representing the district. And he's going to share some information about what those contacts mean for us, what this partnership means for our district, and some of the positives that we all get, all of our students get because of that. So welcome, Tony Walker. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. All right. So we'll start out with BAC. You'll hear, say, BAC, which is the Business Advisory Council. And one of the big things we talk about or said or a theme, and you'll get it throughout this presentation, is if you want to be it, you have to see it. And that's, that's what they kind of start out with. Giving our students the opportunity to see what it's like in a factory, see what it's like in the, the medical field, giving the kids experiences. And a lot of those experiences are based on their interest and their aptitude. We're going to talk a little bit more about that as we go on. As you see in the bottom of it, says Sandusky County Economic Development Corporation, who is the person that runs our business advisory council? And they're supported by the North Point Educational Service Center. And we'll go through a little bit of that too. So what is the BAC? What's its function? Well, an advisory council is an opportunity for schools to communicate with local businesses and local, local community service agencies, work together and kind of develop, what do we want our future employees to look like? What kind of skills should they have? And how can we implement that information into our schools right now? So our kids are ready. We, we talk about soft skills. Uh, we talk about some of the things kids should walk in with, whether it be work ethic, showing up on time, that kind of stuff. Well, we take that information and if we're teaching that in our schools, but we do it in a little giant pathway, we do it when we do job shadowing. Or even when we're just having communication with some of our students. So when we get them out there, they're able to function and assimilate with our business community pretty well. And it's kind of cool because this is a true partnership between the different companies, like represented here. BMG and Krogan Colonial Bank, and you'll see more companies as we, we go through. Our, our, our community, Sandusky County, our, our businesses are giving back their time in effort to our students within our community to, to, to make us good. All right. So start with the BAC leadership. So we have meetings and Beth Hanam, who is executive director of the Sandusky County Economic Development Corporation, runs our meetings and sets up some of the events that we have for our students. And that is led by Andrea Smith. She's from North Point Educational Service Center. And they're the ones that kind of lead us and our group through. Let me scoot back. I went a little bit too far. All right. So talk about who makes up the BAC? And these are just a few, just a few. Schools, of course, us. We have Bishop Hoffman, we have Gibsonburg, Lakota, Vanguard, Setina, Woodmore, and Terrace State Community College. All these people sit around the table and kind of give their opinions on how we can make our students better and take advantage of some of the opportunities within our community. Some of the businesses, and again, this is just a few of the businesses, Motion Controls, ProMedica, Moser, BMG, Martin Marietta, Dan Schroder, Sunrise Cooperative, and Krogan Colonial Bank, just a few of them. Communities, uh, you know, the Department of Health and Human Services, Department of Jobs and Family Services, and GLCAP. There, everybody really does their part to, to advise the schools and we advise the businesses on how we can become better and improve our employment community as our students graduate. All right. So kind of going back to that whole thing. If you want to be it, you have to see it. And this is where we start out. Now, you may have heard the, the term U-Scienc before. I think we've used it here when I talked to her before. U-Scienc is an assessment. It talks about a person's aptitude. All right. So it's an assessment they take. It's pretty intensive. We hold it during Little John Pathway, which is their student's ninth grade year. They take this test and it kind of tells you what you're good at. Not necessarily what your interests are, because they may not know everything that's available to them. All right. So it does give you a little bit of that, but it talks about what's their, what are you going to be good at? And it gives them about 30 jobs that, and it, and it's ranked from one to, to 30 and says, based on your skill level at this time, this is what you, you'd be pretty good at. So that's kind of how we start with that U-Scienc information. And then they talk about increasing exposure. Now, uh, for the, uh, it's been several years. We've sponsored or we've been part of a teacher boot camp. Now, teacher boot camp is actually taking some of our educators and educators around, around Sandusky County and taking them and putting it into businesses for a little bit to learn what they're actually, what they actually do in that business. So that if they're having conversations in the hallways or they're talking to the students and they're saying, you know, I really think I might want to do, be a machinist. They know a person or a company that does machining. So it's a chance for us to network. And kind of, so we started out with the teacher boot camp and then we started with the student career camps. Okay. And the student career camps, we take some of our students who show an aptitude, let's say in agriculture. And we'll take them and we go to, we go to Sunrise and learn about the different jobs that are available in there. And it allows our local businesses not only to network, recruit and talk to some of our students, but it allows us to see teachers and the students to see opportunities that are out there upon graduation. And see, maybe, and we do it our ninth grade year. So hopefully it kind of directs their, their course of study as they go through. Building connections, again, career showcases, whether we're doing job fairs and companies are saying, hey, this is what we do. We do our ninth grade year, we go to, uh, and we have our ninth graders go and they learn about like Whirlpool and, and the different companies. And they'll usually have Green Bay Packaging and they, they do certain activities for the kids. Again, allowing our students exposure to some of the companies that are around here, some of the options, career options that there are out there. Then we go to, as they get into their junior, senior year, we're doing job shadowing. So we're putting the kids actually in the company to, and allow them to talk to people in that profession and ask questions. ProMedica does an excellent job. There's, there's a lot of companies that do excellent job with this. But I just mentioned that ProMedica does an excellent job of this where we, uh, we'll, we'll have a student that says, you know, I think I might want to do dietary. Well, we can, we can put them there. I think I want to be a neurosurgeon. We can put them with a nurse. They won't let them do any surgery, but they'll, they'll actually allow them to do some questioning and answering. So it, there are, even IT, there are, there are companies out there that, that actually work with that. Work with our kids. And again, they're networking every time they do that. So and that kind of maybe evolves into internships. So the kids are actually doing that. And maybe they're going to do some hands-on work. And then as we go down, eventually they're going to graduate and they get employment. All right. So they know somebody in the field, they can talk to somebody, they'll know the, the pros and cons. And hopefully direct them as they go. All right. So the Ohio Department of Education, Workforce and Business Advisory Council has established these three goals, which we kind of talked about a little bit. So we're, uh, they want our business advisory council develop personal, professional skills for future careers. So they're talking about our students, what kind of skills are needed? So we talk about that as a group and we try to implement some of that as we work with our kids. Building partnerships. So not only will I or some of the superintendents or job coaches get a chance to network with these, with these businesses, our kids get a chance to also. So if they see somebody owns a business in Walmart or some of the other stores, they can actually have a conversation with them and, and hopefully get some experience. And then again, coordinate experiences. We have all these schools doing the same thing. They all, we all want our kids to be successful and, and get a job. So if we pool our resources, we hopefully can allow all our students to be successful and develop students that can achieve what they need to. All right. So activities that we do, talked a little bit about it. Teacher career camps, actually putting the teachers into different businesses, learning about it. Student career camps, this is a picture of some of our students doing a career camp. Now, this was unique. Sometimes you go to a career camp and this, the, they will do a presentation, they'll say, hey, this is what we, we end up doing. Uh, this is, this is how we produce something. So the kids, and they'll get to know the different jobs that are there. Well, this time they actually had the students actually do the work, try it out. And it was hands-on. Kids loved it, loved it. And matter of fact, they, since it went so well, they did it again this year as they went. So, and again, career coaching, networking, job fairs, of course, manufacturing showcases, committee meetings, and I'll just talk about the community, community meetings. This allows us to communicate and again, network with other schools because they have good ideas too. So it allows us to borrow those ideas and they borrow from us and we try to make it our Fremont way and, and hopefully benefit the kids. And again, the U-Scienc information. Now, U-Scienc, that assessment is good for more than five years. So the kids will have access to that. So as they, and just a little bit more about that, as the kids take the, I told you, they have like 30 different jobs that it identifies that they have the aptitude to do well in. Well, uh, they can actually research the job, you know, maybe it says that I'm going to be a teacher. So I can actually do research on the U-Scienc site and say, well, this, this is how much they get paid in this area. This is how many jobs that might be available in this area. So they can actually do research that way. It's a, it's a great assessment. Takes a little time, but gives them great information.
Mr. Walker, if I could real quick.
Please.
Do parents have access to the U-Scienc result?
They can have access to the U-Scienc result.
How would, how would a parent do that?
Just, just ask and we can send that information.
Roger that.
To them. Yeah. And they actually, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea if we sent that information on to the parents so they know what it actually is. Sometimes like say for, I'll take my daughter's example. She took Little Giant Pathway freshman year, fall or freshman year. All right. So we'll have to keep going back to it, revisit it, you know? What do you want to do? And then as you become a junior and senior, it becomes more real. Cause I gotta get a job or gotta go to school and still get a job. But it becomes more real, but we need to revisit it. So, um, one of the things that a lot of our employers have been doing during the job fairs is asking, what's your U-Scienc say? You know? Tell me about your U-Scienc result. And it's kind of, kind of funny because it forces our kids to think back. They've also started being very specific about, let's say, uh, the medical field. Hey, we're going to just do one on the medical field. You know, and we're identifying students that, that showed a high interest or a high aptitude in the medical field. And we're just going to take those kids and put them there. So even if I was, I wanted to be a mechanic, I didn't want to be a, a medical person. I, I'm not forcing that kid to go in that field. So, or to go visit that. All right. Um, here's an example of it. They, we just went to a place called Sports Force and this is a program they did on Young Men Innovate. So, um, this is a chance where they grabbed ninth grade boys that might be interested in technology, that kind of stuff. And we were able to go and visit. There, there had to be 20 to 30 companies in this group and we got a chance to do, uh, watch a presentation on each one of these. So again, it's an opportunity for us to have our students think about different employment era, areas that they might be interested in going to. Students loved it.
Mr. Walker, can you speak to why it's for boys only?
That one, that, that was, they just want direct. I think we're going to have one for babies later on. If we have a, there's a group that does a program called TDA. Right. And that's through just the women, that's operators, engineers. They run cranes and, uh, backhoes and that kind of stuff. And try to get more of our, our ladies into that. Happens every year. I think they're, they're just trying different things, just motivating.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Walker, just a reminder, I need you to be at your microphone so that.
I'm a walker. I mean.
Can continue to hear you. That's all. Thank you so much.
Okay. I, one of the cool things about our, our BAC or Business Advisory Council is they're award winning. All right. And just recently, uh, they were, they received a four-star designation, which is the highest, uh, for Ohio Excellence in BAC recognition. So other people are looking at what we're doing in Sandusky County and they're copying what we're doing in Sunday, uh, Sandusky County. And, um, really proud of being a part of that group and the people that are involved in it. So, uh, we are trend setters in that, in that regard. All right. So for more information, uh, you can go to about BACs, you can go to Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. And type in BAC or the BAC operating standards. And of course, you can find information on North Point Educational Service Center and the Sandusky County Economic Development Corporation. All the pictures that you've seen are all our students. Every, everyone in there are our students becoming involved. And I just want to point your attention to, to two of them. The bottom right, that is Dan Schroder Roofing Construction. Now, the cool thing about that, that student is actually learning how to weld the, the membranes together that they use on roofing. That was hands-on. Let's go. Get in it. And the kids, again, kids loved it. All the way to the left, uh, the students were actually playing a game with the crane. Actually learning how to, uh, move one object from one, uh, place to another using the actual equipment. I guess that's not a crane, uh, but, um, but they, they get to move it from, from one place to another. And they were doing it for time. So, uh, really, really neat. I think the kids had a great experience and, um, does anybody have any questions?
I do. So did you say this starts in the ninth grade on?
Okay. Our, well, okay, let's. Our Little Giant Pathway is usually a ninth grade class. So, uh, but all the activities that we've mentioned here are ninth grade through 12th grade.
Okay.
All right. So some of those people you'll see in this, on these pictures are juniors or seniors.
Okay.
Primarily, that's what we kind of go for. If we're going to do experiences, we'll do juniors and seniors. If we're going to do experiences, we'll do juniors and seniors.
Okay, so it's those classes. So my next question is, you said it was kids that had certain aptitudes that could do it. Does that mean, um, like, and how they're passing the?
U-Scienc?
Yeah, the U-Scienc, like their scoring or?
Yes.
I guess can Johnny that's getting Cs over here, is he able to join this program instead of so-and-so who is?
Yes, it is, it's not based on grades at all. It's based on just your aptitude in doing, and, and I'm going to say a little bit of interest too because sometimes kids, if they've not been exposed to that job, they don't know about it. And so our job is try to expose them to the different jobs that are there. You know, sometimes we just make assumptions that, you know, if we go into this company, they only make widgets, but there's a whole bunch of things, product procurement, sales, driving, production, there's all kinds of different jobs in that one company that our kids are not exposed to, so.
And so this is widely talked about, I mean, for kids to get involved in and?
Yes.
Okay. And just a reminder that that Little Giant Pathway course that Mr. Walker's referring to is a requirement to graduate from Fremont Ross High School. So it's a unique, locally-developed course that we designed in Fremont City Schools and every student has to take that before graduation, 9/12. So typically, we try to get them in freshman, sophomore year. Sometimes that gets tweaked in their schedule a little bit, but that's typical for a freshman or sophomore to cross that off their list.
Probably one of the best things that I think that we've done as a district is Little Giant Pathway. Might not be the most popular opinion amongst certain populations, i.e. the kids. But I think, like you explained with even your own daughter, like those things, as a freshman, you're like, oh, let me just get Little Giant Pathways done and check it off the list so I can go on to the next thing. But as they become sophomores and juniors and seniors and the reality of being employable comes to fruition, some of the things that they do in Little Giant Pathways are going to really matter. My question was very similar to Laura's. We definitely, this presentation has been awesome. We cast a wide net out to catch a lot of children. Maybe doesn't need to be answered right now, but are there any disparities in what we're doing? Are there any kiddos that we're missing? And I always think about that because there are the high-achieving students that garner a lot of attention because they're high-achieving. But you can also be a high-achieving, all A student and kind of stay out the way a little bit. There are children who maybe are low-achieving and get attention because of their low achievement. That's very easy to think, we gotta plug them into things like this because some of these things might be more in their lane as an adult. But there's always that middle-of-the-road student who, they're not making too many waves on this side of the spectrum, being high-achieving, they're not underachieving or low, in low achievement. They're just kind of hanging out. Those are the students that I'm always concerned about. Maybe they don't advocate for themselves or don't know how, just food for thought if, if we're missing those kiddos.
Sometimes they need a little push because they might not have anybody pushing them. Exactly.
Agreed, that's a good thought. When I'm explaining, I'm sorry, when I'm explaining U-Scienc, one thing that I always try to, I, Tony and I have had this conversation over the years. It's a combination and it allows you, I tell kids, it's not just what you're interested in. It's not just what you like. I refer to it as, it's what likes you. So it shows that aptitude of what you're good at. And, and I'll use my, my youngest as an example. He wasn't real sure until U-Scienc of what that looked like. And I, we were able to point out some of those pieces that liked him. It was obvious when you looked at his scores, when you looked at his data, that the upper-level math and science courses liked him. He did well at that. He had an aptitude towards, towards those. If you ask him, do you like calculus? He'd be like, pause, no, right? Yeah, I'm out. That wasn't his thing, but he had aptitude towards it. So when we started having those conversations with that U-Scienc data to say, this is what you're liking, but these, this is what's liking you, it opened up whole new conversations. I just think it's valuable data to use with our students. And to go back, Ms. Lewis, if parents, we can, we can certainly have some thought as to how we get that information out. But I would say to any of our parents that are listening and attending to the meeting and would like to know more about their child, they can certainly reach out to any of the administrators at Ross High School or to Mr. Walker or myself. And we can make those connections to make sure that the parents have access. All of the students have their login information and they can sit down and look at any of that.
Sometimes even well-adjusted students don't want to share. Or don't, you know, I mean, just because of their age and stage, they don't see the value yet. But maybe mom at home would be chomping at the bit to see that, to start those dinnertime conversations.
Yep. So very much so, please reach out, I would say, to any of our, our community that has that.
And maybe it would be a good practice to share those, those things out.
I do think the results are shared in some aspect. I just don't know to how, at what level.
Yeah. And, you know, and also that helps out with the job shadowing too, you know? Kind of directs it. And we look for two things from job shadow. One, that was a great experience, we'd love to do it. But we also look for, ooh, I hate that, there's no way I'd ever want to do that. We want them to have that experience before.
Yes.
They further their education and try to do it and, and.
No collateral damage, making a mistake like that.
You want to make that, not necessarily a mistake, but you want to learn that now.
Yes, correct.
Where it doesn't cost you. And, and at this point in time, we can, they can direct their studies too. Whether through, through CCP or taking advantage of Vanguard, you know, they can, they can direct their studies or think about what they want to do. You know, I would say one thing about even the visiting and doing these career camps. A lot of the employers, and I'll use motion controls because it happened there and opened a whole bunch of students' eyes. As they were talking about setting up the different modules and machines that they had, he said, one of the employees said, well, we, this is the information you learned in, in high school. And then related it to real world. So, and you saw the kids saying, oh, all right, I get it. Now it makes sense. You know, now it makes sense. I didn't want to believe it before, but now they do.
That's why Algebra I matters, that's why.
It becomes the real world, you know, and it makes sense to them. So it's been a great experience for our students.
And I think it matters that the people involved are enthusiastic about it. And Mr. Walker, kudos, good job.
Great partner.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Board members, I just have two, two quick things. At your seats, I left you some results from our stakeholder survey. Just tried to, trying to pull a few pieces together, as well as I left you a packet that we recently utilized at our district leadership team meeting. So I just wanted you to, I will share that piece with you. If I could just take a moment with our community on board, just to share the stakeholder survey results. So we had a total of 767 results in total. And you can see the breakdown there between students, staff, parents and community. So we did get some representation from all four of those groups. We had both parent and student from both our preschool to five range, our six to eight range and our nine to 12 range. So again, very happy that we had individual representation from all of our stakeholders. So in the survey, we asked our stakeholders some very similar questions across the board. We first asked them, how do they connect with Fremont City Schools? And how do they stay current with information? We thought that that was good to hear from them as to what was already working. We then asked them, we gave them some list of items and we asked them to prioritize what they felt was important to be seen in Fremont City Schools. We then went back to that same list and we said, how are we doing on that item in the district? And then third and finally, we asked them to rank Fremont City Schools on a couple of items. So just a few pieces that, so we've looked at this information with our administrative team. We've looked at this information with our district leadership team last week. So I just wanted to share a little bit more with you. So we do have some takeaways. What I gave you, I looked at, so on those individual items, we asked every group of stakeholders to rank them from number one to number five, five being their strongest vote, their highest ranking. And so what I did is I looked at where we found fours and fives for each of these. So for example, under staff and community, 96% of the respondents, of staff and community, said that caring staff was very important to them. When we asked, how do Fremont City Schools rank with caring staff? 89% of the respondents gave us information that said it was a four or a five. So our team went through and we looked at some of those pieces. We then started looking at what are the takeaways and what are some of the data that can help move us forward? What were some of the pieces that we really needed to take a look at? One piece that I'll share with you is the bully-free environment in every subgroup ranked it fairly high, saying that it was a four or a five in the percentage of importance. And when we looked at, how are we doing? How is the district doing producing a bully-free environment? There is a discrepancy. Those numbers, they drop off. So that's a piece that we as a district want to take a little bit closer look at. Our community, our stakeholders, our students, our staff, our parents, they all say that that's a really important thing and we're not hitting the mark. So we're going to keep working on that part. Another takeaway that we just found super interesting and we're not quite sure what it means the data is telling us, is that clean facilities was important across the board. Our parents, our staff and our community, they all said it was a, clean facilities was an important piece and they said we're doing a pretty good job with it. Our students said it was an important piece and our students said, we're not sure you're doing a great job with that. There was a discrepancy there. So spoke with Mr. Ann Way, we brainstormed that a little bit at our cabinet last week and we took a look, we're going to dig a little bit deeper. We want to have some more conversations with our students to get a little bit of that information. They obviously see the building from the very inside.
And also your janitors would be good to, you know, all your housekeeper.
Very good.
Yes. Cleaning staff, yes.
Being a coach, I would say, maybe the students need to lean on their teammates a little bit to pick up their crap.
You know, and I, I wondered about, like, in my head, I'm thinking as a student, I see the paper towels that don't make it into the basket in front of the restroom and I'm seeing that, right? And that's within the building. Whereas my parent maybe doesn't see that as much because they're in the office, they're outside the building, so, yeah, I'm kind of thinking that there might be.
Throw your water bottles away in a trash can instead of leaving it on the weight room floor.
And there might be some very teachable moments.
Very nonspecific.
Just in a generalization, but.
Yes, yes. So I think great data.
Sure.
For, to be able to take a look at this and I think we'll be able to use this moving forward. At the very bottom of that page, overall ratings, all were out of five stars. Nothing less than 3.77 and all the way up to a little over four on average of, of what we're doing. So I, I'm very proud of the results. I feel like we have some very good pieces in place. We also can identify some areas where we need to keep working and do better. Good information, I just wanted to share that with you, make sure that you had that. I'm happy to, to share more as needed, so please ask if there's something that comes up.
If I could real quick.
Absolutely.
I just think that when we send information out to students, staff, community, parents, and we get information back, it's, those need to be action steps. So just a shout out to you and everybody. Well, these things can be scary to people, especially when you're the person in charge. These things can be scary when you're waiting for the result back. And then you get it and you're like, well, now we gotta do something about it. It's great to just see it as that and not be intimidated by the information we get back, but just use that as a tool, a roadmap, you know what I mean? The fact that you're already talking about, going back to the students again. Laura, that was great input about talking with our custodial staff who keep the.
They know everything that goes on, they know what they find and who it's coming from. So maybe the, the kids that are making the messes, you know?
Yeah.
And so.
But I'm, I'm glad that we're not intimidated by the information and just take it for what it is, figure it out and make a plan to move forward.
I appreciate that, thank you, Ms. Lewis. And finally, just a shout out, I don't know if anyone saw on social media, but one of our teachers, one of our very own, was recognized by the Chamber of Commerce, Krogan Colonial Bank and Countryside Manor as the Teacher of the Month in Sandusky County. So congratulations to Mrs. Elizabeth Hammacher, who is one of our orchestra, she's our orchestra teacher. She does a fantastic job. She teaches all of our students six through 12 that are involved with orchestra and she is a shout out. So she had a lot of students that gave me some information and a lot of other staff members that gave me some good information. So it was happy to, I was very happy to make that nomination. That is all I had for this evening, if you're okay, I will continue. All right, item number one, we have one donation this evening for the Krogan Learning Center.
Again, a motion to approve item one, please.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Moving on to student and staff achievement, item number two. Mrs. Abernathy shared a memo that I did share with you. This is, for this agenda item, this would be our Chromebooks to purchase to continue with our one-to-one student device option. So this would be for our incoming freshmen next fall.
Again, a motion to approve item two, please.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motion's approved.
Thank you. Item number three, we have a resignation, a couple resignations that we'll bring before you this evening. I will just let you know that Ms. Gallatin is, was hired, has been hired with us since 1990. So we wish her the very best as she moves over on her retirement. And, and just a shout out there for Haley Perez. She is resigning for her student monitor position so that she can move forward and continue her education with the hopes of rejoining Fremont City Schools someday in the future as a teacher. Item number four, we have some appointments for certified staff, substitutes, as well as we have a new bus driver and some support staff. And then item number five, we have some continuations that started last month and we're starting to see some of those teacher positions come up. Rebecca Johnson will be joining us as a math teacher here at the Fremont Middle School and Michaela Michaels will join us at Ross High School in our business department. Item number six, where I would like to hire Joshua Matts and Bridget Smith as our summer elementary intervention coordinators. Item number seven, we have appointments for some of our athletic and extracurricular pieces, beginning with Santiniya Minor and ending with Mark Schidler. Item number eight gives us two coaching positions, Bailey Robinson and Nicole Windinger.
Again, a motion to approve items three through eight, please.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally, could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bloom, any discussion?
We're already talking about fall of next year.
We're already talking about fall of next year.
But that's great that we have people to fill those positions.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you. Item number nine is the second part of that technology memo from last week. And this, this approval will bring us some new devices for our staff to utilize.
Again, a motion to approve item nine, please.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lehman. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion?
I would just mention that in finance committee last week, we did discuss those expenses and kind of the reasoning behind the timeframes of how technology, it's a lot of computers, but a lot of the computers that are in place have gone beyond their, their life. And, you know, and I think our, our staff takes care of the equipment. But, you know, just the technology gets old. It's a major expense, but we do have the funds and I think it's a great investment. That's all I had.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Wonderful. Item number 10 is just to approve the, the expense to continue to honor and then celebrate our staff. That annual event is coming up in May.
Can I get a motion to approve item 10, please?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Lewis. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yeah.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motions approved.
Thank you very much.
All right. Moving on to report of the treasure.
Good evening. I'm gonna, in my report, I'm just gonna kind of go over a mixture of the financials and some of the legislature that might be affecting it. It all kind of just ties in together because it's this fun time of the year where the biannual budget is being discussed. And quite frankly, we have no clue where it's going to land. It has gone through the governors and from the governor's version to the House version, there were major changes. And now from the House's version to the Senate's version, I'm sure there will be major changes again. And then when they come back together and duke it out over what the final is going to be, I'm sure there will be more changes. So welcome to the fun ride of this biannual budget. I'm sure you're all excited. I know I am. I watched so many webinars over the next couple of months that explain how each change will affect what is going on in the school finance. And we have some great resources that put out how I can see individually for our district, how it will affect our funding.
Oh, nice.
When it comes to the state's share. One of those big factors right now is that cash balance. And I can tell you, I don't, I did not see this as a positive thing, but current legislature would have this as a positive or the current Senate or House bill for the budget would see this as a positive thing. We had on a list of 612 school districts, I believe. We had the 42nd lowest general fund cash balance rollover. So out of that whole list, we were 42nd from the bottom with 20% last year at our fiscal year end is where our, the percentage of our cash rollover was in the general fund to what our expenditures are. So personally, it was a little scary for me. I believe we were sitting at 60 days range of true days cash, which gets a little nerve wracking in the months where we don't have real estate collections and we're getting close to that time, we get a little thin on money, but we still do manage. In the last couple of years, we've seen an increase in that cash balance and it was really thrilling. And now it's getting a little scary again if they want to hold us to that very tight line. So I cannot express how worrisome the legislature is with that cash balance. So.
And it's 30%?
Yes, that is where it's currently sitting, which I will say it was at 25. So 30% is an increase. So we will see.
Done yet.
Yeah.
I guess the, the number that sticks with me based on the information that you had shared was that Moody's, when they're looking at bond rating are looking that we have 25%.
That is how you get a AAA rating for bonds, which we rely on to build the schools, our new schools, and we are up for refinancing. And we would like to get a lower rate and that rating would help us. But we're at 20% and they would like us to be at 25. But if you get too close to that.
To the 30.
Yeah. It's, that's why it's not a positive.
Yeah.
It's such a. You gotta have this to get that, but then you're behind if you have that because it's not supposed to be there.
So because if we hit that 30% as of right now, they would lower our real estate collections, which for cash flow purposes is a little worrisome. So just something to keep in mind as we're talking to our legislators out there. Another thing that's affecting us right now is the auditor state came out with some guidance for financial health indicators that are going to roll out May first. And that is based a multiple factor, there are 16 different indicators. Multiples of those indicators, guess what they rely on? Your cash balance. So it's the left not talking to the right hand. I don't know, but.
My head might explode.
I'm sorry, Mr. So it's just, I gotta, because it was funny. I think Tuesday morning I had the, I think the state auditors was first and then this cash balance legislation was second and your brain is just like.
Complete opposites of each other.
And I will say the auditor's office, as they're presenting this, they've been working on this for years. And so it's not something that they're just making up now because they hear that cash balances are what the legislatures want to focus on. They've been looking at this for years, trying to make sure that school districts, well, and this is town government entities that they audit in general, have indicators so that they know if they're going to be in a fiscal risk other than just your five-year forecast. So they've been developing this for years and now all of a sudden the legislature is focusing on us having lower cash balances. And they're like, during their webinar, at the end, they asked for questions and I think every single question was, well, what about these, this House bill or the budget bill? And how is that going to affect it? And they're like, we don't know. We will address that when it becomes law. As of right now, this is how we're rolling it out May first. We will make changes as necessary. So.
The question should have been, do you all talk to each other?
I believe that was asked and I believe it was danced around very prettily.
Probably because they're pulling their hair out too, because the legislature, they're not, doesn't seem like they're listening to anybody.
Sure.
Let alone, why would you listen to the auditor of state?
About financial matters.
We're gonna, we're gonna make up our own financial matters and saying, oh, you know how you want to have a savings account? You know, savings set aside as a personal income. Schools, we don't want you to do that though.
So. Yeah. So it's been a, it was a very fun day to get to try to wrap your head around both of those and try to make some financial plans as we're working on the five-year forecast and all that fun, amazing stuff.
Well, good for you and, and that's really good for the district that you are staying on top of those things and you're aware of what's being discussed and are knowledgeable.
And a group of treasures in Sandusky County have been trying to come up with them. There, we're going to reach out to Jerry Miller to kind of talk to her about what her take is on this. Each county operates differently, each school district operates differently.
Sure.
How Fremont operates compared to Gibsonburg, Clyde, Old Four, any of the ones in Sandusky County is totally different because our needs are different, because our kids are different. We might share similar areas, but the whole makeup of each district, the kids are just different. We all know it.
Well, just population alone.
Yeah.
It's a huge difference.
I'll go to area treasure stuff and everybody else is so different from Fremont. It's insane. And they're always like, well, Megan, what are you guys doing? And I'm like, well, we have to do A, B, C, D, E, and F. And they're like, oh, you're just, you're different. And it's like, yeah, whereas a lot of them are more rule-based. So it's, yeah, it's a fun time. So we are going to try to get with Jerry Miller, just to kind of sit down and it's not, it's a lot of, a lot of other school districts do this annually with their auditor, their county auditor. And I think we might want to try to do that. Just, we haven't had to before, but with all the changes hitting us.
Sounds like an appropriate time.
Yeah. And with the community's interest now a little more so how the real estate collections and stuff work with the districts, I think it would also be easier for us to answer questions. Maybe see what they're getting in the auditor's office. I've worked in an auditor's office with real estate tax collection and I can tell you it's not a fun place to be. So I can sympathize with them with the amount that people come in and are very upset. So I think being able to talk with that side as well would be beneficial. So we don't have anything set in stone yet, but I do know that's something that there's a group of us that have been discussing. So as we look at our March financials, just, I will point this out again, our real estate collection was a little late. I guess the auditor's office has gotten a new financial software package and they were a little behind. I'm sure Sarah, you guys have run into some of it as well. And it is my least favorite time of the year right now with my allergies. So I apologize if I keep having to cough or sneeze. So on my next meeting, I'll be able to give us a better snapshot of what happened in real estate taxes for this year versus last year. I will point out though, that we did receive our Nexus Pipeline payment. It was somewhere to the tune of $2 million. So. Thank you. I really appreciate the teamwork. I very guzzled down the one. So well, we are very happy to see that there is legislature coming up on how utilities may not have to pay real estate taxes on some portion of their stuff. So we might.
Sure, why not?
I mean, everybody else is doing it. All right.
We're doing everything else. Let's, let's drop everything else in the can too.
We might want to look in, saving that for some rainy day as that we might see a decrease, some sort of decrease. Again, it's not passed yet. It's not in place, but there is some legislature looking at public utilities and potentially a decrease in that funding area for us, which with having AMP and the pipeline in there. Our county does have some money in that game, which Denise and I did reach out to our legislature. Was it raining? That boys are concerned over that as it, it is. Yeah, it is a concern of ours.
What is going on?
So Megan, when you mentioned the $2 million, what is our overall budget for the school district?
Oh, 48 million.
Yeah. So I, I think people need to understand that, that when you talk about the, our buildings, you talk about our staff, you talk about our bus fleets and, and those dollars. And $2 million is a lot of money. But, you know, it, it, it's not going to cover us forever. And, and I think, you know, I commend you and past people in the administrative roles for, for not dedicating those dollars before we actually got them in.
Yeah.
Because that was a lot of, you know, predicting there that are we going to get it? Are we not? How much, how much are we going to have to pay back? You know, there's that whole game. I shouldn't call it a game, but, you know, that whole process. And, you know, so there was some good planning and, and now we look at those dollars as to, you know, how they best serve our children.
Yep, exactly.
I think another good thing for people to understand is the average person is, we have almost 500 staff members. Oh, okay. We have more than 500 staff members or employees. And we service and feed 4,000 students every day. So, I mean, it's, when you start looking at that, I mean, 550 staff or employees, that probably ranks pretty high in Sandusky County as far as employers go.
Employer. Yeah. We are one of the highest.
Yeah. So I mean, probably top five in the county. So when you look at a budget wise, you know, oh yeah, it sounds like a lot of money. Let's go see what, I understand we're not on the level of ProMedica with all of their equipment and, you know, what they do there. But in the whole scheme of things, when we're, when we're servicing this many employees and students, that's a big, that's a big change. And then with that too, all the services that we provide students, the state wants to cut our funding, yet again, if we have a child with autism, we welcome them with open arms and we do everything we can for them. Other types of schools don't have to allow them in their building for whatever reason. So let's cut public funding for schools, but we have to service anyone who walks in our doors and needs that extra attention. And we're eager to do it. It's not that we don't want to do it, but we have to have the funds to be able to do it.
Provide the appropriate services to meet their individual needs.
Dyslexia, autism, whatever it is, special needs, anything on an IEP. There's so many different things that we help and service and do, but that all takes money to do that. Don't want those kids to fall through the cracks.
On the financial report, we have this line item 0019303, which Medicaid School Program. Am I reading it right that we are in actually a deficit of spending on that? Do we have dollars that are just not coming in yet? What it, what it shows me is our initial cash was 480,000 and those that our expenditures have been 652,000. Leave us with a deficit of 172, 178,000. So my question is, is that because of timing or is that because dollars are not flowing from the feds?
I'm not sure where you're looking at right this second.
Just on the actual financial report, the cash summary report.
Oh, okay. I will say our Medicaid payments, there was a little bit of a delay in the payments this year. So there was for year-to-year comparison, there was a little bit of a difference between March of last year and March of this year. Medicaid School Program.
It's on the first. Did you find that?
Yep, I did. It's the second from the bottom, I believe you're looking at.
And I bring that up based on what Mr. Price was saying about, you know, the children, children that need to be served, that have different types of abilities or disabilities and, and needs. And that we are serving them and we have to, those dollars are coming out of our general funds, right?
Right. And part of that has to do with some of those costs we have to pay upfront. And then we're kind of making it up as the year goes on with Medicaid reimbursement.
So part of it is a timing type issue.
Okay. Cause I will say, well, I can definitely make a note to dive into that come June 30th. And so we can get a clearer picture on that. But I will say our Medicaid program. And so we can get a clearer picture on that. But I will say our Medicaid program, it is a lot of extra work. Some schools do not do Medicaid billing. But our speech therapists, psychologists, nurses put a lot of time and effort into this. And we do actually see a good chunk of money come back to the district with our Medicaid program. So, but yeah, that I would, for the most part, it's a timing difference of when we expend things versus.
Justify that we do need those services and.
Yeah.
We are committed or should be committed.
Yes. Okay. So let's move into expenses. The big things in expenses, you'll see our medical insurance costs are up 250,000 year to date for certified and classified employees. That's our, the benefits. So that would be how much the, what we call the board share, how much the district contributes to the employees' benefits. We have what's called an insurance fund. It's the O24. It is separate from the general fund, which is what this report is on, but our, and it's not singular to us. A lot of districts are seeing their medical costs go up quite a bit. So we have had to address that in our funding of, um, our insurance fund. We are very fortunate and what we have is called a self-funded insurance. We pay our own claims up to a certain dollar amount. This is my baby. It has been for 10 years. So I will try not to go too deep into it because I can talk about it way too much. But we have kept that fund as, is in good of condition as we can, but we are seeing huge amount of claims. And I believe I've talked at different times throughout the year about different programs we're implementing. Um, Laura has heard it in our health and wellness committee, different things we're implementing to try to keep those down. Cause I'm sure as many people seeing out in the private sector, that medical costs are just, they're getting everybody. So while we are trying to do what's best for our employees and not have them on the hook for the expenses, we're also trying to do things on our side that benefit us as well to keep the, um, fund in a good spot to pay those claims.
And then when you talk insurance, if someone, if there's a catastrophic type health issue, those do move to a different level of insurance.
So we have in a self-funded, um, program, we pay every claim, each individual person on our plan. And I don't just mean employee, I mean, every dependent up to $160,000. Once they hit that $160,000, we have what's called stop loss insurance that kicks in and would cover those costs after that. And that includes medical and drug. But every single, they say every single belly button on the plan, we pay up to 160,000, those claims.
And belly buttons are important.
That's just, that's always been the term that's used. So that's, yeah. They'll ask me how many.
Makes sense.
Yep. So not to harp too much on my insurance fund, but like I said, that's my baby and I've been on that for years. So while there's a 7% in the general funds cost, we've seen about an 11% increase this year in claims. So far this year. So that's, that's an expense we've always got to take into account because if that fund dries up, we're going to be dipping into the general fund, which we've already dipped a little bit this year. We're hoping we can pay that back, but it's, I mean, it's insurance. So a little bit of a gamble. Um, we also are seeing our electrical costs up 17% for this year. I'm sure you all have seen it at home probably as well, but we aren't immune from that increase. Uh, one of the costs, I will say, we have a curriculum purchase in here, which does inflate our costs a little bit, but you also have to understand that is just one larger section of curriculum. We make multiple curriculum purchases throughout our cycles. So.
Absolutely. And the, you know, that you've already, um, approved, this is for our kindergarten through grade five. Every one of those students and teachers will be impacted by this. So it is a, it is a very large curriculum and will be, uh, in place for a five year period.
That did make our expenses up a little bit this month. It was, Pam came to me, she's our accounts payable. She pays all our bills and she's like, Megan, I don't, am I writing a check for this? I'm like, no, I will wire it from the bank. She's like, $5 million. That's a really large amount. Cause while she pays the bills, she doesn't usually hit those millions of dollars. That's my payroll department. So she was a little nervous on that one. Or no, not 5 million, 500,000. There was another purchase that she came to me on. But, um, yeah, so anytime there's that significant of a dollar amount, she's always like, Megan, are we sure? Yes. No one is scamming us. I promise.
It's good to double check.
That's right. She is my, she is my fraud girl. She is all over it. She thinks everything is a scam, which
I like it.
Good thing to have. But the good news is with real estate, um, we got a larger deposit in March. So our true days cash got bumped up a little bit. So for the end of March, we are sitting at 111 days. Which I personally am always happy with. So and just a little bit more on that cash balance, I just want to make sure everybody understands that is at the end of the fiscal year. And that is just your general fund. So that's what they're, which is what this report is looking at. We always report on the, um, cash balance for month end, every month, so that we are always keeping community and everybody knowledgeable where we sit with that. Cause part of the finance committee this month, we did come up with a cash balance policy so that we can communicate to our, everyone that we have parameters that we operate with that cash balance. We don't want it to get too low, but we also don't want it to get too high. We want to be good, what good stewards with our money. And we understand that these are taxpayer dollars. None of us here are exempt from paying taxes. And I'm sure it hurts just as much. So we want to make sure that we are using those cash dollars or those tax dollars effectively. And that our community knows where, that their money is being put towards a good use. So I don't know that I ever talk this much. Swear. Okay. We can move on to approvals.
So item 11, um, financial report. Can I get a motion to approve item 11?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nally. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lewis. Any discussion?
Thank you, Megan. I just want to say thank you. I think you're, I don't think it's going to matter what, uh, changes. You're always gonna find that balance in there. I think that's what it's all about, that fine line. So you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Lewis.
Did you second that? Did I?
Yes. Mrs. Bl. Yes. Ms. Lehman.
Yeah.
It's a surprise.
Yes, motion's approved.
Was that three hours?
No, Ms. Lewis doesn't have a clue where she's at. That's okay.
Not the first time, kids.
We know.
I know.
Usually second, fourth Monday of the month.
Item number 12, we have a appropriation change for athletic, um, equipment line. Just to give you a little bit of information, that is for, um, the purchase of bleachers that are not permanent. Did pay attention. Look at me.
These bleachers would be housed in our auxiliary gym at Ross High School. We have need during some athletic events where, um, there could be of a need and we, seating would be very helpful. When we built the auxiliary gym, it was very much, um, first prescribed, it's as an instructional classroom. So we do teach wellness classes all day, every day. Um, and that is the primary reason to have, um, that auxiliary gym. It kept, it keeps our instruction off the main gym, uh, our competition gym. But we do have overflow for some of our athletic events and within our league, sometimes, um, for volleyball, for example, they may play a JV game um, on the competition gym, but they may also have a freshman game going. And some of the other schools in the NLL might have that going on in an aux gym. So it will give us a little bit of flexibility. We decided that we didn't really want those to be permanent in there, um, because within our wellness classes, children are moving all around. Um, so we will have some opportunity to store them and bring them out when needed.
So is this an addition to the budget for that department?
It is not a general fund, um, budget item. It, I wanted to point that out. Since this is strictly an athletic need, we want, and looking, we made sure that the athletic fund would, could handle this and they do, they have a sufficient balance to support this purchase. We felt that it was not, that it was a good idea to have the purchase come out of that fund. And since it's not something we had planned for necessarily at the beginning of the year, but addressed the need mid-year, we are increasing their budget line to, um, be able to pay for this expense.
The monies are there. They just don't have them immediately available in their line.
We did. With athletics, we don't fully appropriate all the funds that are available in their cash account. So Mr. Burnt, I will give him a lot of credit. He budgets pretty much, he knows pretty close what he's going to spend each year out of that athletic fund. Um, and like I said, this was a mid-year kind of, oh, hey, we think we need this. So we have to, um, appropriate a little differently.
Obviously there's great, good justification for that.
Hosting the wrestling alone is probably mid-year. That makes sense that.
Folding chairs that had to go out for parents to watch. And when you have two mats going on in there, that's a lot of parents who want to watch their kids. And yeah, when we had our wrestling tournament, there was a lot of folding chairs that had to be set up. So that'd be great. Plus you'll be at bleacher levels. So you'll be able to see better when you're sitting behind instead of just everybody on the floor. So.
I think it'll be a nice addition.
Yeah, much needed for stuff like that. So. All right. Can I get a motion to approve item 12, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nally. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Nally.
Yes.
Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes, motion's approved. All right. Moving on to board member communications. Uh, Lori.
Well, thank you to, uh, little Miss Gianna for her pledge and Tony for his, that was really neat to see. I like when he comes in and gives all the information on what he does. Cause there's a lot. And it's really neat to see it. And I'm sure the kids benefit huge from it. And it's pretty, when they did that summer one, that was really cool. So, but I don't really have a whole lot more to say.
Laura?
I just want to let you guys know, last week was a busy week for myself and kind of for my workplace. We had the chance to connect with the, um, younger kids, uh, the kindergartners. Uh, I should, let me take this back. Last Tuesday, we had the first graders, all, all three first graders from Atkinson come in and the teachers. They actually read to our residents, um, they read a bunny book. We kind of paired them up. We had all the residents strategically placed in the dining room. We paired them up at different tables and they read to them. And then we had, um, little Miss Julia, she came up and actually read through the microphone to everybody. So everybody got the gist of the story. And so I could hear it too. And it was just fun. It was fun to hear the laughter. It was just so, man, and the residents loved it, you know, it's, it's just, it's that connection there. They're missing it. But it was so fun to invite them. And so we did that. And then, um, and then we had a quick bingo game. They had some Easter treats out of it. And then before we knew it, it was time for them to leave. So it went so quick, but it went so smooth and it was so fun. And I, I know the kids enjoyed it and I know the residents did too, and the teachers. So it was all plus. So that happened on Tuesday and then Thursday, we had some of the National Honor Society kids come in and they helped us in the evening for a special, um, bingo. So, but they were there to help this time. They didn't actually play the game. The kids played on Tuesday. The younger kids. So Thursday night, the older kids played and, or they didn't play, they helped. So we did refreshments again and they helped and they, and also really enjoyed, uh, you know, just the fellowship and everything is going on in there and they, they want to help again. And I think that was mostly juniors and seniors. So I don't know. That was just a, it was a different, it was a different stream having the older and the younger, but, but we all enjoyed all of them. So I just want to thank everybody coming out to spend time with us and I hope we can do it again soon.
Um, to our students, particularly our upperclassmen, um, our juniors and our seniors. The theme for the rest of the school year is make good choices. Uh, we have prom this weekend. We want you guys to have fun. We want you to make memories. We want you to, um, just make it the best experience that you can. But we want to encourage you to do so safely. Um, parents, we all have a, a huge responsibility in that as well. So make sure that if you're hosting, um, after prom activities, um, do so responsibly. Provide a safe, um, drug and alcohol free environment for, for our kiddos. To our seniors, uh, senioritis is real. Uh, it's a, it's a real thing. Been there, done that. Probably not as elegantly as I should have. This is the time where you feel like, ah, smooth sailing. We're good. You feel that way as a senior, but it's really time for you to button things up, buckle down, make sure that you have Little Giants pathway done. Um, make sure that you have all your graduation requirements, Matt. Um, you definitely should be talking to your guidance counselor. About anything that could get in the way. The last thing we want is for somebody to not be able to, uh, walk with their class because requirements, um, haven't been met. So keep chugging along and, and finish the year strong.
Tom?
I actually have nothing this evening.
All right. Thank you to Gianna for coming in, leading the pledge. Thank you to Mr. Walker for coming in and then giving us information, giving the community information on, on what we're doing. We're not just teaching out of textbooks. There's a whole lot going on at Fremont schools. So, kids are in a good place here and there's a lot of information for them to make the best decision for themselves, for their future. So, I know we've hit a lot on legislature and budget and everything else, but to the public, to, um, anyone who wants to, and I know I go on little rants and everything, but, um, get involved, even if that is just getting ahold of our representative or our senator, um, and let them know, or be informed on, on what this looks like for public schools. I know we talk about it and we have a little bit more information about stuff than the average person does, but the disparity of what a public school is held to compared to, um, a community school, a, you name it, any, you know, a charter school, a non-public, whatever. There's like 20 different categories of schools in the state of Ohio. It's ridiculous. And they're all at different levels of what the responsibility is. Um, public school. responsibility is. Public schools is at the very highest of, of being held responsible for everything. So. Get educated a little bit and get your voice out there, especially when your kids are in public schools, not just Fremont, but anywhere across the state. It's very important for these people that we elect to understand what constituents really need. I think too much of it is brought up out of political reasons, more than what's good for our kids or our families and our communities. I think too much is, gets politicized and it's, it, that shouldn't be. So, but anyway. With that, can I have a motion for adjournment, please?
Moved.
Motion by Mrs. Bloom. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lehman. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Lehman?
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Nally?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, motions approved, meetings adjourned.